Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and it's February 20th of 2020. Thank you all for joining. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, special welcome to Howard.
Welcome back.
Joining us again. Yes. There you go.
Been through a few things the last few months.
Okay, approval of the agenda for tonight. I don't think anything has changed or needs to be changed.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you too. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. No public tonight for comments, so we'll go right down to new business. And we'll start with the enhanced consultation, not to be confused with enhanced energy planning. So that's what I just handed out. I'd like to take this in two parts. Do one that's -- regional planning commissions need to do with towns every so often, and that's the first part, just kind of a check-in. Basically about the town plan, but a few other things. And then, that led me to think, there is so much in our town plan. The second page, the second handout, the appendix, has just a few of the things that are in the town plan that I thought maybe next meeting or sometime in the near future, we look at those, some of those, and see if there's -- if we want to prioritize any of those, make any suggestions to the select board, anything like that. So, but the order for tonight is just to look at this first part, the report, the enhanced consultation report. And this is, this can be an interactive thing. This is not, does not have to be final, so if there's some things you want me to take out or add before we file this with the state, this is the time.
We have to file this with the state?
Yes. ACCD, they're the ones that keep track of municipal plans and whether they're meeting state goals and that sort of thing. The Agency of Commerce and Community Development.
So, is the constant consultation report referring to use of consultants, or is it our?
No, we're consulting the, okay, I've got, right now I'm going to put on, I need to put on another hat for the Regional Planning Commission. We're consulting with the town about the town plan and some other components that we'll bring up. Yeah, so no consultant involved, it's just us, just a discussion.
What's the purpose?
It's basically to, you know, reopen the town plan, take another look at it, make sure it has all of the state goals in it, and, you know, maybe instigate maybe more movement on what was said in the plan.
I thought it was, was it amended by statute? We have to look at it every five years or every eight?
It's every eight years. So, the one we have now, in the top line here, expires in October of 2027. The eight-year cycle started again because we, and the select board, we readopted the plan in total.
Well, we put in the, well, that's because we added the energy part.
Yes, and the section on the corridors, the wildlife corridors and stuff.
Right, but anytime you open the plan, then it's, you resubmit it for a vote, and then it starts all over again, because that's an amendment, basically.
There's a process. We did not, we had readopted. If you just amend it, if we, if we had just gone in and just said, "We're just doing the energy plan" and that kind of stuff, that does not restart the clock.
Ah, okay.
We, the select board decided to readopt the whole thing and get another eight years out of it. So, the enhanced energy plan was adopted in, you know, this past October, and then the RPC said it was in compliant with state standards, so that gives it substantial deference before the Public Utility Commission. And then the Natural Resources section was updated as part of that readoption. Now, discussion of training needs of the municipality, I just put these in as just ideas. Stormwater, stormwater issues, and maybe transportation, because there's a lot in the town plan about complete streets, and there's a lot about recreation, too, mostly associated with transportation. So, do those look okay? Any other training needs you think you would like to ask of the Regional Planning Commission?
Yeah, I, I have some concerns. We spent enormous amount of time and energy on an energy plan, and it's there, it's got all sorts of recommendations, and I don't know if this comes under here, properly under here or not, the section, but we're not doing anything with respect to implementation of our suggestions.
Yeah, I think it falls, there's some
And I don't know if that falls here.
upcoming parts about maybe some of the shortcomings of the plan, or how it's being executed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, jump the guns.
I mean, if you think we need energy training to get things moving, that's a different matter.
Well, that's what I wondered, whether that was something, specifically, that's what I wondered.
Okay.
I don't know if it's so much energy training, but an awareness of the opportunities to implement energy efficiency methods that would help advance the energy plan and municipal plan. So, I mean, the question is, technology changes at a pace that is staggering these days, and to be able to implement something that is, that has an eight-year shelf life with the constant changes in what is available, I think would, it would behoove us to have someone come in, help us look at the goals and objectives within the energy plan, and advise us about how some of those targets can be met with new and emerging technologies. Because you don't want to be investing in something now that may have a better return on investment in two years.
Well, some of it is just implementing strategies as opposed to specific fixed facilities that could be obsolete.
Right, but when we're talking about charging stations, and we're talking about other methods of encouraging transportation efficiencies and transportation reduction, or reduction in transportation costs in terms of CO2 emissions, those technologies are something that if we wanted to promote, we would need to work with partners and set something up, and I think that that is what would be beneficial in terms of training. Because we can then promote those strategies if there is something specific that we could harness to help the residents and businesses in Rutland Town to reach and exceed some of those energy targets.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have anything specific, other than I know that there's a body of recommendations that are sitting still, and
Yeah, have you checked out the rest of the town plan? There's lots of bodies.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay, C, review of new required elements, I mean, they are, they have been the economic development chapter, which was done the last time we did it, I think in 2016, and then the forest blocks and habitat connector, which is what we worked on. That's the new one, yeah. Discuss the municipality's local permitting process, the administrative assistant to the select board, Mr. Bill, and the planning commission, stormwater commission, review, approve subdivision applications and stormwater permits and enforce stormwater regulations. I think that's about it for our regulatory, or our permitting powers. Discuss the municipality's non-regulatory implementation priorities, and I just put in, it's somewhat limited, and if the planning commission was so inclined, we could advocate for a larger role in implementing the enhanced energy plans, actions, studying the recommendations for Business Route 4, and becoming more familiar with stormwater issues in general. Overview of what the Regional Planning Commission can do. It's available as a resource for water quality, this is down Roman numeral 2, resource for water quality-related regulatory requirements and implementation, and it's available for writing grants to fund MS4 and other water quality projects, as well as transportation We are currently, the Regional Planning Commission is currently working to support local energy committees, so this might be an opportunity for the town, and by that, just to give them the help they need, get them going again if they've been lapsing, get them together, get several towns together, that works out better in some of the smaller towns. And the Regional Planning Commission will inform the town of any initial work on its regional plan update, which will start later this year.
So Barbara, under those, the first two bullets, water quality-related regulatory requirements, that would, if you're looking at stormwater as a training need, they could probably help with that, correct? Is that what you're saying there?
Yes.
And then, with respect to anything related to energy or technology, energy-related technology, they could serve as a resource for that? So, are those, is it, am I interpreting this correctly, that how can the RRC help? A would address B in terms of training needs, is that?
Yeah, when you think of water quality and think of energy, ask the RP, the Regional Planning Commission first.
Yep.
The staff, there may not be the person on staff who is the best in form, or, you know, can do the best presentation.
But they could point us in the right direction.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, Bill Madison is the Regional Planning Commission Board Rep right now. And then, discussion of other local and regional issues and priorities. Anything there, the rest, the rest of this gets into the nitty-gritty of the town plan. So, is there, of what we've covered so far, is there anything that's not covered there? That may be not town plan-related?
You're talking about this item C, right?
Yeah.
Well, you have the, do you have that? Well, you have completely, there's the corridor project with West Rutland that we have talked about, but that's not mentioned anyplace else. And we're having, is that a presentation on March 11th, or whatever the next, our next, no, March 12th, our next meeting?
The consultant who did one of the studies, yeah, I hope he can make it there.
So, if you're looking at a discussion of other local and regional issues, I think that that's both a local and a regional issue that's not otherwise identified on this consultation report. So that's the, what is it called, the Route 4?
Business Route 4, yeah.
Business Route 4, corridor.
Okay.
At one point, I mean, part of that, there was a, in that plan, there was discussion about having a bike path that would go all the way, I don't remember, to Fairhaven or someplace, you know, along the lines here. So, any type of regional inter-community projects that might be worth undertaking would be something that I think we would want to, you know, identify. Because if we can get together and get some grant money to do that, it may help bolster the attractiveness of our entire region, as well as promoting recreation and, you know, increasing of
There's a lot to be said for bike path, and for pursuing that, in terms of pedestrian safety, biker safety. I was never a big fan of bike paths. I rode the road until Sherman introduced me to the bike path in Rutland City, which I worked very hard on, and it really has changed my attitude about a lot of things. It makes it much safer for me to get onto my regular routes, and it's much more comfortable. And it's not completed yet.
Is it the East Creek, or?
Yes. Rutland Creek.
Rutland Creek.
And there's another section of it.
That's correct. There's another section of it that's, that engineers are working on now, planning.
And it's just, it was an eye-opener, so I very strongly endorse what Dana said.
Okay, okay, yeah, so we can talk about this further. The step to getting something real would be getting on that list, the select board's list of goals and FOCI, or whatever. That's the, they have a list every year that they try to check off. Okay, down to the town plan part, it was readopted with enhanced energy and the required components of Act 171, which is the corridor stuff. And then, it asks for strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. And this is what I came up with for the report, and we can, you know, expand on this in the Economic development, responding to the challenge, challenge of finding qualified employees by keeping the regions to colleges now responsive to community needs, redeveloping vacant lots through infill, and looking for a long-term water and sewer contract with the city to provide more certainty for developers and better rate structures, fee structures. These are all ongoing. Public utilities and facilities, strength suggesting that sewer and water facilities be provided where growth is most desirable, and studying the costs, benefits of extending existing sewer lines. That would be something that hasn't really, not much has been done on that, but would be a strength if something, would be something to be really needed and a benefit to the town. Also in the town plan, suggestions that opportunities for adult recreation be expanded, and that development at Northwood Park continue in accordance with its master plan. Never seen that master plan.
Is it written?
It sounds like it is, I don't know. Does anyone remember doing past town plans? I'm looking at Jerry, only Jerry.
Maybe Howard. Howard, I don't remember anything about it.
I don't know where, it could be, it could be a plan, but I don't know where it is.
Well, we keep passing, we keep approving that as an action item, so maybe we should take a look at that. I also, I also put in here as a strength, the viewshed analysis, that's at the end of the town plan right now, but, you know, it's really attached to the energy plan. It's untested, new, but it should give us some guidance for future development in those areas. And the energy section now includes very specific direction for energy development citing as a strength. Weaknesses. The plan is lengthy with numerous is not even the right word, strategies and suggestions, I mean, there are scores of them. It would be difficult for the town to implement many of these since they are not prioritized either. For instance, transportation, the plan reads, "Currently, most land development patterns in the town discourage bicycle and pedestrian facilities." But I don't believe there are many, other than that one that Sherman just mentioned, in conjunction with the city, that there's much being done along those lines, even though the plan is very clear that bicycles and pedestrians are not really wanted, or, you know, helped out. Flood resilience as a weakness, with the exception of MS4 impaired waters, and that would be the Moon Brook watershed, new fill construction and infrastructure are not discouraged in designated flood hazard or fluvial erosion areas or in river corridors.
Aren't they now with the, aren't they now with the new watershed plan, though?
Yes. So, with the exception of the MS4 impaired waters, which would, should cover, I think that should cover the stormwater ordinance areas. Subdivision regulations do not encourage green infrastructure, you know, rain gardens, things like that, or reducing impervious areas as called for in the section. Natural resources, it, that section advocates for, but doesn't act upon any strategies yet to steer development away from prime ag soils or steep slopes, or it does not create buffer zones along streams and rivers, those riparian buffer zones to prevent flooding. A lot of the stuff ties into what the state is looking for.
Is that really accurate, given the stormwater regulations and the?
Yeah, I mean, I could, we could put in there except for the MS4 area.
Well, I'm sort of embarrassed, because I can't put my hands on the language I want, but, or want to articulate. But the buffer areas and the regulations that we now are charged, this seems to say they're not helpful, or they're nonexistent. And I don't think that's accurate, I mean
Okay, okay, I can reword that.
But are they limited? I mean, they are limited, and they're existent, but limited
Right, what the state would prefer is that they would be town-wide, you know?
Yeah. So, what this is saying is that what we have isn't enough. Okay, well
Yeah, if you look at what the state's goals are, and if you look at what we say we're doing in the town plan, or what we want to do. Then there's housing, there's a pretty big section in housing, again, not really acting on the strategies to encourage the retention of existing affordable housing, modifying the land use map to provide multifamily housing in areas within or adjacent to existent, existing settlement patterns.
There's a typo there.
Yeah. Promoting the conversion, thank you Norm, and there's another typo, of larger homes to multifamily housing, exploring the need for a set of housing and rental building codes to protect the health and safety of, I mean, this is stuff that's pulled right out of the town plan. It's action items, and then
Go ahead.
And then providing easy access to resources on affordable housing, whether it's on the town website, or
So, in whose purview?
In the town office building.
Whose purview is this?
Housing overall?
Yeah. I think that should be a priority, quite honestly, but I just want to know whose purview is it?
It's planning, so it's part of our purview, and certainly part of the select board's.
So, that would be my vote for the things that we're looking on here, because if you don't have housing, you don't have opportunities. And so, if we really want to look at equitable housing and affordability and the opportunity to attract people to the area, then that's something we should give a high priority to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and the other handout, I put, added even more things that were in the housing section.
That's fine.
That we can take a look at.
If you were asking for, I mean, I made a connection with it, that was specifically stated or not, Barbara, but you said something about, if you want something to be, to gain attention, it should get on to the 2020 goals focus?
We might have missed our opportunity for 2020, but maybe not.
Well, if we have a marker, we could take a
Add an E?
But yes.
So, my point is that if housing is a joint prerogative of the Planning Commission and the Select Board, as well as other entities, perhaps, then we would want that to be a focus for some type of dialogue on how to move that work forward, whether it makes it to their goal list now, or whether we put it on their parking lot list for the goal list for 2021.
Right.
I think that would be my
Yeah.
My vote of things that are on here that are
Is that, that's something that the Regional Planning Commission could help us, because, you know, I hate to sound pessimistic, but it's all about money, and, and it's, you know, in order to, I mean, being in the trades, I see people that are investing in this kind of stuff and not investing, and if there's no money to be made there, so to buy expensive property, it's just, it's extremely difficult. I'd love to hear somebody's
Yeah.
You know, idea of how they could even begin to suggest that that could be done. Until you attract developers, you're going to, and if you attract developers means money and means reasonable things, and just isn't happening in Vermont. So, I'd love to hear it. I mean
There are some organizations that, that, some nonprofits, that focus on affordable housing, and, and there's one that focuses on helping people finance their home. I don't, I don't know, I've told you, I've told you more than I know already.
Well, I just, what you, what you see now in the building trades is that it literally is, is 50% to 100% more than it was just 10 years ago to do any construction. So, because of that, it's just, even though the economy started to churn and people are doing stuff, it, I'd just love to hear what somebody's, you know, that knows way more than I do, I mean, obviously, I just would love to hear that, what, what strategies, because it just seems a daunting task to get people encouraged to do any development for affordable housing.
And one of the things I interpreted when I, looking at our plan, is that when we say affordable housing, we mean homeownership as opposed to rental.
Right.
And that, I mean, they're two different pieces of that.
Or getting, or getting landlords to maybe, you know, do, do a duplex out of a larger home, you know, or, you know, getting them to do something to create more housing. So, a little bit of both.
But where the landlord, where the owners would be resident in the, you wouldn't want a four, a four-apartment complex that's affordable, in other words. So, there's a difference, well, didn't imply, I mean, I got the implication that it was homeownership that would be affordable, and that may be just my sensitivity.
Something for us to talk about.
Yeah.
Well, I think there needs to be a scale of options for people, I mean, young people that might be tentatively located someplace, might want a rental option that's affordable, whether they're college students, or whether they're just starting out in an entry-level job, and they may be moving after a couple of months or a couple of years. So, I think we need to address the whole spectrum of needs, but I think ultimately, if you're looking at growing the population, and you're looking at attracting investment both in human capital as well as in resources, you need to be looking at permanency of residents. So So to Sherman's point, that's something that's critical, but that requires a, that would require a task force to actually address, I mean, task force in the sense of a, a work group in the town that would be addressing that from a, a number of angles. And I think that Jerry's point is well taken, that we should have people from, from industry be part of that conversation so that they can present that perspective.
Yeah.
Because it's only by bringing those multiple perspectives together that you're going to get something that is actionable.
Well, you think of the couple of things we hope we're coming to the area of 9L really made it difficult for BJ's, for instance, and then the story that was going to go up on Route 7 on Thomas's land. You need some of that along with it to, to bring people and jobs and, but it is something, what Jerry was saying, a developer today. To get a developer to go in and buy a piece of land and go through all the Act 250, the costs and all the stuff, it's difficult, it's really, really tough.
Even existing, existing buildings, it's just, it's cost prohibitive right now, it's just.
Not just because of Act 250, you're saying?
No, a lot of things, building materials. And, and, you know, to Dana's point, you know, and I guess Howard's too, you have to have, you have to have jobs to bring young people here, to bring people in there. You have to have industry. So it all, it all kind of goes hand in hand, I guess, so.
Right, and that goes back to some of the economic development, once getting people here to fill the jobs, I mean, it's just. There's so many things in here and a lot of them are interrelated. So like, what is the priority? But again, the housing, we'll always see this as something that's required in the town plan, you know, the state's always saying, please try to address the affordable housing. Not too many people, not too many places around the state have really found the key to that and.
There's probably more help for doing downtown development than, like where we are.
Right, right.
But they're really pushing and promoting and.
Yeah, there's that infill and there's like the, you know, keeping development consolidated. And like maybe using the second story of maybe a storefront or something for housing and. So there's different ideas out there. And again, it might be just getting the right people here to come talk to us about it. And so, okay, the last section of, of this report is opportunities, what would make the town plan more effective? Make it shorter, add a timeline and list the strategies and action items with the highest priority. And then possibly assign who's responsible for completing those. Trying to remember why I put regional transportation initiatives and cross jurisdictional committee recommendations. I guess just to be aware that we are connected to other towns and there might be some issues. I mean, I, I know there's some committees that the select board has. That there's an inter municipal committee where they meet with the city on different issues from, from time to time. So maybe there's some other opportunities there. River corridor regulations, you know, for the rest of the, the town. And they would actually provide the town with more disaster relief when those things happen. More vigorous support for the development of affordable housing. And Norm's favorite, assign responsibility for the strategies of the new energy section to a new energy, to possibly a new town energy committee. Well, maybe it's not your favorite, but.
Sorry?
Maybe it's not your ultimate favorite, but it is something you will have talked about. So that's, that's the report we file. Do you have anything? You want to go back and add anything at this point?
I just have a question. The, this first one, where we say action items with the highest priority. If, if we decide to approach this in any way, in terms of assigning priorities, would we do this with the select board? Because unless there's, there's support and interest at the select board level, what we do is not going to be, not going to result in any, in very much happening. So.
Yeah. I think what would work best is if we just told them ahead of time, you know, would you like us to do this? Or just ask them and tell them we do have an interest in it. And because there are so many items, we thought there was a need for it. I think they would say yes, just go ahead. And that's, that's pretty much why I did the appendix, just to give us some ideas and the, the major sections of the town plan. So I thought in another meeting, we could take a look at that and maybe everyone can also look at the town plan and see if there are other ones they think belong in that list. Or maybe we just take the town plan and look at every one of those action sections and prioritize them.
Maybe do you like one section each meeting or something?
Yeah. You know, that said, something like housing is going to be a lot harder to tackle. You know, so maybe we want to prioritize the areas that we concentrate on first too. Want anything more on the report?
What, what happens with this report?
Um, it gets filed with ACCD along with our town plan. And someone up there reads it and says, okay, you know, they're, they're trying and they're paying attention to this stuff.
And when is it due?
Um, probably the end of the fiscal year, but I was hoping to get it done sooner.
We've had this town plan, the existing town plan since 216 or 217.
The existing one only since October, but.
Well.
14.
Which we.
Right, so we don't do this every year.
But this is the first time I've seen this and we, when we adopted the town plan without the energy component. I'm not aware that we.
This is like a check-in, like halfway through the length of the town plan, just how's it going, you know?
I think it was 14.
I'm not challenging.
And then we did the maps.
I'm not challenging it, I'm just unfamiliar with it, maybe surprised that we haven't seen it before. But if you're saying it's, this is the right time. Of course, if we take.
I know, they give us like three towns to do every year. I think they decide which towns.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's state generated.
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily statute.
I'm quite sure that's, yeah.
They give each planning commission three towns.
Right, right, they say, hey, it's about time to.
And how did we make the list? Oh, the state dictated to the regional.
I'm quite sure they do.
That Rutland Town.
It's time to go visit Rutland Town.
What the underlying process was.
We hadn't gotten a visit in several years.
That's since I've been here and that's.
So that's probably it. They look at the, like the time since they've reviewed a particular town and they just draw that number.
Okay.
So Barbara, for next steps, I mean, it sounds like a fairly sizable project. So if, if we're looking to make this more than just a document that sits on a shelf. I am hearing you ask us how we would like to proceed and what work we would like to do with respect to the town plan. And set some priorities and then ask regional planning commission for some, some support while we, we make progress on implementing some of the strategies that are in the town plan after we've identified areas. So maybe we should make that, I think somebody else made the suggestion. A, a work session that we look at certain, certain sections at a time, because to take the whole town plan, try to digest it at once would be a headache, I think, for even the most. Those with the most stamina, so. Anyway, I think that that would be a good idea. My vote would be to look at housing, maybe economic development.
The easiest one.
Of course. I, I always like taking the easy things first.
That's the easiest one?
She's joking, she's giving me a hard time.
Thank God.
She's probably thinking it's the most difficult.
Yeah.
It's like eating things off of your plate. I was always good at eating the things I liked most off my plate, but then I had to eat it off, so I switched my philosophy and started eating the things I liked least.
That's worked for you.
Still here, so I guess.
So since I kind of sprung this on everybody, why don't we take a look at that appendix? And if we have time, you go through the town plan, next time we'll come up with a strategy.
Strategy the next time.
Excellent. Okay, we had a little minor flurry of things that came in since we did the agenda this week. And one of them was the Rutland City, they call it their master plan, it's essentially their town plan. It's in draft form. It looks a lot like the earlier master plans from the city. But there is a public hearing on March 11th at 6:00 PM, if anyone's interested in attending or making any comments.
I have a board meeting that night, so I can't make it. I'll be in Middlebury.
Oh, I took off the RPC hat, did you notice I'm back?
Where's that meeting?
Oh, I would assume it's.
I think it's City Hall.
Or whatever they call them, the grand room.
Yeah, I, I just think I saw that it was City Hall, I don't know where.
What time?
Six.
Starts at six. Not sure I have a copy of that here. So, and in old business, we did sit down with a couple of people that work for Andres. Bill did, Mary Beth and I did, and we sat down with, with two people from Watershed about the stormwater interactive map. And so we had a pretty good meeting. Gave them some marching orders and they're going to get back to us in mid-March, I think. A prototype or something. So that's, that's in the works, they gave us a price, it's, it's, it's a little expensive, so we'll may have to go with pretty much what they come up with and maybe tweak it if we need to as we go along. But it's going to use a big chunk of our budget. It's going to, it's like $1,500 to get this map ready.
Do the interactive map?
Yeah, so right now they're looking at, they think they can do it with addresses, so the search will be by address. And then there will be, oh, what's the, what's the correct, the right, correct wording? There'll be like a pop-up that comes up and you help me, Mary Beth, that says, you're in the watershed or you're in the watershed and the stream buffer area. And, and hopefully they'll also say, you know, so sections, you know, two, three and four of the ordinance apply to you. Something like that.
What mapping would this be?
It'll be something to be on the town website so people can go in and find out if where they live, you know, if it's, if it's in, if it's covered by the ordinance. They need to get familiar with the ordinance.
Did they say anything about the fact that not all parcels have addresses?
We didn't. So that, I mean, I think if they run across that, that will come up in the next couple of weeks.
They should have addresses to, to an owner someplace, I mean.
We were thinking of physical addresses.
If you're searching on the map, Howard, how do you, how do you pull up an address that doesn't exist? If it doesn't have a street address, a 911, we had talked about that at one of our previous meetings. If it doesn't have a street, a 911 address, how is that going to pop up on a map? It may have a parcel number, but it wouldn't have a street address.
So we're not going by parcel numbers and we're going by the state parcel data through VCGI. So. Let's just see what they, what problems they run into.
Okay, but it wasn't raised that we, we had that same issue when we were doing the mailings, correct?
We talked about adding names, like calling up a property by, you know, by researching by name. And they didn't think that was necessary, they thought they could cover it with the street address, right, Mary Beth?
Well, and they would probably know what the closest address is to their property, so it would get them kind of close and then they could pan, you know, for the few people that don't have actual addresses.
And I think there'll have to be a disclaimer, I mean, if you can't get this to work for you.
Then contact.
Right.
Bill.
Or if you don't understand it, you need to come talk to Bill anyway.
Well, if it, if it only works for people, for street addresses, it's a step in the right direction.
Right.
You know, span numbers, every, every parcel has a span number. No matter where it is, it's, and that's connected to a homeowner, of course, but span numbers are used for a lot, you know, and a lot of the state mapping.
Yeah, but who knows their span number?
Well, well, you need it for, for your.
It's in the grand list and it's, yeah.
Isn't that part of, I don't know the terminology, isn't that part of the, the, the property identification when you apply for that?
Homestead?
Homestead?
Yes, it is.
It's, it's part of it, so everyone has it who does their tax, who pays taxes, I guess.
Well, we'll see where this goes.
It might be an additional way to locate the properties if there's no physical address.
Some of the new state mapping that they got out is, they're doing a statewide mapping, having all, all towns and communities and and I think that's driven by span numbers, when you, you go in, you're keying a span number on that map, it's a complete state map, it'll bring you right into that spot. And that's some of the newer mapping that they're using. And they're, they're moving along with that and it, and it works really well.
So, you know, perhaps they, that when you search, you search by your property or span number. I mean, I realize that probably adds cost to what they're doing, but.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like too big a deal to me. You know, any, any, any property address is going to have a span number attached to it anyway, right?
So suppose somebody is looking to buy a piece of property. And they don't own the property, but they'd like to find out whether that property happens to fall within the the watershed. Then they might use the span number to find out. So I think it would be more useful than just having.
The address.
That's just me.
I don't know how much that complicates it, but it seems logical to be able to search whether either.
Okay.
Yeah, because when you, this mapping that they've got, when you key in a span number, it zooms right in and it show you that entire parcel. It just, it outlines, the whole thing is right there.
And then someone that looked on their, looked for their street address and couldn't find it, if it said or by span number, they could look and say, you know what, I'm going to have to pull my taxes out and see what my span number is and.
Type it in.
Okay, we'll see what, what we can do and what they can do.
Sure.
Announcements. We should have, hopefully if the weather permits, we'll have the consultant who did one of the business root four studies here next meeting, Jim Donovan. He did the, he did the street, smart, street, smart growth.
Smart growth.
Yeah, studied. Otter Creek one, Otter, the Otter Creek solar projects are in the news, if you will, again. They, they're trying to add a, a third project site, they're, they're dividing up what they, they already have permission to do two. They were trying to divide one into another part and have a total of three. They're running into some problems with that, one of them being that they did not let us know about this petition. And, and a couple other, of other reasons that they tried to take, use and. And, and a couple other, other reasons that they tried to take, use an expedited process with the PUC and didn't like that. So they have to start all over again. So we'll be hearing more about Otter Creek, one, two and three.
Why are they splitting it? What's the, you heard Bill, like what's the reason they split, they're splitting it?
They're trying to make a bigger project.
What?
It's just to, just the, the size of the project.
And it also looks like, you know, they did so much clearing of trees, they're, they're now looking to expand onto some cleared land. Land that was cleared, that was like pasture, that might be more visible to some of the neighbors than what, what they were starting with. With the clear stuff.
By dividing one of the projects into two parts.
Kind of expanding.
I'm sorry?
And kind of expanding that.
Are they expanding?
The solar fields?
Are they expanding the solar field? Is it, is the sum of two and three going to be larger than two standing alone?
Yes. I'm quite sure.
Well, it says, it says it was applied for as a 4.99. And now they're trying to split it into two smaller, 2.2 for a total of 4.4. So it looks like a little bit smaller.
Okay, smaller, but I think there's some people who think there might be more panels.
Or?
The, the generation is a little bit less, but it's, it's kind of confusing.
Is this really more of a technical adjustment than a substantive one?
Not if it's sitting on areas that people can see more.
Okay, but.
I think that that's probably where the biggest part of that is coming from.
If the issue is visibility, you know, yeah, I can understand the PUC being upset.
Right.
If it's a technical adjustment for the same or less amount of energy. Same, you know, it seems to be a difference. But if it's visibility, then of course
Yeah, so, so they.
That follows into our crosshairs.
They tried to slide this in through a quicker process, so no one got to ask many questions about this. So, you know, we didn't even get the notice. And that was one of the reasons why, you know, they were told to start all over again. The select board got it a couple of days before Christmas and didn't really act on, didn't know what was in it. So they haven't come to anyone in town to really explain this. Or the Regional Planning Commission.
And what's the, are they going to?
Well, if they do things by the letter, we would have more of an opportunity to ask them to come. You know, did they give the 45-day notice?
Seems illogical that the state would, the PUC would just allow them to do that without following the proper process. That seems crazy.
They didn't. They dismissed it.
They caught them.
They said, you know, start all over. So they're, they're back to just the original two.
Okay.
That have been approved. Yeah.
And that's what's supposed to happen when these kind of things occur, correct?
Yeah.
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 Good.
They're back to the original two at this moment, but they're asking for two to be divided into two and three, and now they're going through the proper procedure. Allegedly.
Yeah. And somewhat related, we, we very belatedly have the Mylar for the Iso Volta right away. We looked, we approved this in August.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit beyond the 90 days, but we Bill has spoken to them, asked them about, you know, why there was a delay. And we were thinking that maybe it was because there's, this is an international company and it's a little more complicated. So unless anyone has a real objection, I, I'm planning on signing this and filing this tonight, even though it's way beyond the 90 days that were required for Mylar. But this is a Scandinavian company and with offices all around the world and.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm concerned. And I'm not all that familiar with the procedure, the 90-day procedure you're talking about. Where is that 90-day limit?
Stated on our.
It's, in this case, it was a boundary line adjustment we did for them. So it's on our permit form.
Right.
That.
So our permit requires that the final plat has to be submitted within 90 days of our approval.
Right.
Our permit says that, yes.
The permit says that.
But we approved the permit.
Do we have to waive something to now accept it?
No, I'm inclined just to say, to say that you know, we have it and we'll file it. We understand that they're.
I'm concerned about not this particular thing per se, but the precedent for the future.
Right, of course.
And if we have to go through something to waive that 90-day or should think about waiving the 90-day requirement, we ought to do that before you sign, because once you sign it, then we have a harder time saying no the next time. At least theoretically.
How late is it?
Or how many days has it been?
It's been six months. It's been 180. Oh, I was off by two?
So the attorney that brought it in yesterday or the day before yesterday, really recently. I called, when I realized how much time had actually passed, I called him back. I said, well, here, here's the issue. So it's in the subdivision regulations, the 90 days. I couldn't find anything that says any process to waive it. It could, it could just be simple as a motion to say go ahead.
But it's not, it's not a subdivision.
No, it's not. It's, it's giving them access to about that much property on the corner of, on the corner of Windcrest Road.
And they, they moved the line to do that, right?
So the Iso Volta is, is where the delay was. That's the company that owned the property that Ecos Energy wanted access to. Like Barbara said, they're international, they're, and they had to find who, they had to figure out who was authorized to sign these, the paperwork on their behalf. And then find the person, literally, where in the world is this person? And there's two of them they had to find. Get it to them, get it to the next person and get it back. It just.
So Iso Volta had to give the authorization for the boundary line adjustment to appear?
It was their property.
In order for the other person to file the solar project?
So it's not.
That person is, is the solar, is the solar project.
Right. Otter Creek.
It's Otter Creek, yeah. They're the recipient. It's, it's their right-of-way from Windcrest Road. So they don't come off of Cold River Road. It's their, it's their right-of-way off Windcrest Road, which they thought was town property. Turned out it wasn't. So they had to go to Iso Volta and just that's what I said, it just took time to get to the two people and get the paperwork back and make it around where everything was.
So it's, it's only, the, the 90 days is only on our permit application. That's the only place it shows up. And we, we probably verbally mentioned it to them in August when, when we moved to approve the boundary line adjustment. But it's nothing in any of our regulations. Because the subdivision regulations just say, well, there's this thing about boundary line adjustments that the planning commission can, can look at, but it doesn't. Didn't, if you remember, that's why we came up with that new permit, because there was no definition. No.
But the application has.
Process.
The, the 90 days.
The, the application form.
Which they saw. Says 90 days. It doesn't say what happens after 90 days. Do they have to go through a second hearing?
It's.
I can go look at it, but I think it might say that it becomes.
I, I, that's what I, that's what I thought. So to Norman's point. I, I would make a motion to Actually, I'm not going to make a motion. I'm going to have a discussion first. I want. If we, is there, is this time sensitive now before Barbara signs this?
They can't, the, the developer can't start their construction on the road until they have it filed. So they want to start their construction process, they need to have access to, they need to have access to the property to do it, so.
Right. And when do they want to start? Do you know what the timeline is?
I don't know.
It's probably tied into their, their third project as well.
That goes, this goes back to the original two. One and two had that as a requirement anyway.
Right.
That the land clearing could happen off Cold River Road, but the, the actual construction was off Windcrest Road because they didn't want construction traffic up and down Cold River Road.
Right.
So the requirement was to come off Windcrest Road.
But they didn't have the right-of-way.
We didn't, we don't, we, because the town line stops at railroad tracks and they, this is a, this is past it, so. So that's, that's where this whole thing evolved from.
So our, our, our application says final approved plats shall be filed by applicant with town clerk. Within 90 days of approval or such approval expires, an applicant will be required to restart process. I am asking this group for a special exemption for this, in this case.
I don't want to make this more complicated. But shouldn't we just amend the permit to extend the period that they can file to X amount of days so that that they, that the if we did it that way, then we would increase the window. They would be in compliance and we wouldn't have to be making anything up. Making a policy up. Or doing an action for which we have no regulatory basis to act. But I think we could treat their request as a, to amend the permit. Issue an amended permit saying for good cause shown, they have a, the the period of time to file the plat is extended to whatever day you want to file it.
Is, is the paperwork in order?
It was, it was approved. I mean, it wasn't, this was a very short process because it was literally just moving a property lot to give them access to.
I remember in the meeting, it was, it was, that was the quickest.
So I, to, to your point, I don't know if we can amend it because we can amend it. I don't know if we can. There's no there's no, there's no language in the subdivision ordinance about boundary line adjustments, other than it's not a subdivision. That's all there is. So we took the 90 days mirroring the subdivision 90 days purely because of the same timeline. That's, that's was an arbitrary decision because subdivision is 90 days, this is 90 days. I'm not sure if we can change their application after the fact. We may be able to change it for them going forward. But I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a.
I don't know that we're changing the application. It's, we're just amending the permit upon their request to file, implied request to file late.
So if they, if they, if they reapplied, what would be the harm in that? I mean, I know there's a timeline. Obviously. But I just think that when does, when does a, you know, it's kind of like the, I don't know. It's just, you know, a lot of state laws, like the, the disposing of household waste, there's no, there's no, there's nothing that any, it just doesn't seem to matter. So this seems to matter. We have a date here and they didn't meet it. I, I mean, part of me is always one of the people that are more forgiving than almost anybody here. As far as, let's just, let's just move forward and pass this. This is a, this is a person from Rutland Town who's been here forever and let's move forward. These are not people from Rutland Town and they don't seem to be following any rules. You know, I'm not, not saying that that's, I'm just saying, they don't seem to be following any timelines. We set them one and they didn't, they didn't meet it. I, I just, I don't think that's being bad. It's being, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't do it right. So why should we, why should we allow this to just move forward? It's, it's nothing to Iso Volta.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a business that didn't do the things properly. One, you know, we, I don't know.
So if we ask, if we said, I mean, everything is in order now. We could have, we could have a hearing or whatever. And it could be filed at our next meeting, correct?
Right, it's just a simple delay.
No additional signatures required?
If, if the application again, I mean, it would be, it'd be starting over as a new application.
What's, what's the filing fee?
Sure.
$15.
What's downside of our doing what Barbara suggested? I mean, I I mean, it sounds like, it really sounds like we're just going to delay them because they didn't follow our guidelines. And it's, and, and it sounds like there that they really had an issue in getting signatures that they needed.
So, you know, but the only thing I, I disagree is that there is, how do, do we know that it was signatures? Do we know that they were waiting until they saw if the state was going to approve something else? We really don't know that it just had to do with signatures.
Iso Volta is the one that caused the delay. Ecos is the one before the PUC for this, it's, it's, it's the the company.
The delay, right.
Is not the one that's applying to the state for the project.
I, I, I'm good, I'm good either way we want to go. I just, it just seems like we, it would be we, we very commonly kind of you know, give kind of this, this pass away and just seems like, you know, maybe this is one of those cases that shouldn't be, but I'm good either way, whatever.
In the past, others, others have had to come back in and and go through the whole process again, as I recall, in the past, because they missed the 90 days.
That's, I have two things. One, if, if you're suggesting that they have to start over completely.
I, I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting they do whatever's appropriate, not necessarily.
I don't think that's appropriate. I think if they write us a letter and ask us to amend the plan and state, amend the permit so that they can file this out of time, I'd feel more comfortable granting it.
In my opinion, Norm, that's way more complicated than it needs to be. I think it's filling out a piece of paper, giving us the plat and having us go boom at the next meeting. If that's as simple as it is, I'm with Jerry. Let's have them do that. That way, everybody follows the prescribed plan. I, I feel for the people who had nothing to do with
I agree.
the, 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 the delay. But if we create guidelines because we're trying to ensure integrity in our process, then we need to follow.
I agree with that. See, that's, that's all I'm saying. It really has nothing to do with who they are, what they are, what they're doing. It has everything to do with when, when do we make a guideline and actually follow it every time?
What Howard said is that others have had to start on boundary line adjustments as well?
I'm not sure what it was, but I remember I don't remember who it was.
There was one up past the hospital where you take the left up there, that, he's the, he's the town, he's the chief of the fire, police department.
Dumas.
Yeah, there was a Dumas property which turned into a total redo this, redo that. And I think that we, we had to follow certain guidelines and ask them to do that. I don't know why anyone else for a, a one, one meeting delay would be a big deal.
I don't see it as a big deal. I, I think, and everything is already set. We've got all that we need. It's just a question of going
I just think.
Through the procedural steps to make sure that it's done properly.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood you and maybe I'm being I haven't quite shed my history yet. But all I'm suggesting is that a simple letter asking us to waive it and saying that delay was caused because of the internal complications is all we would need to amend the permit.
And they can send us the filled out form that's just as simple doing the second one rather than asking for a waiver of something that's already.
And certainly not about $15.
But, but we have to, we require them to come and be at the next meeting.
Or representative.
So you're asking for an entire new permit application as opposed to just amending this one? Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't know how you can amend something that's already been, that has already expired. I mean, you have an expired license, you can't use it. If you have something else, you can't use it. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see what is the simplest way for us to be able to resolve the issue. And asking them to write a letter or asking them to come in for five minutes. Somebody's here locally, correct? No.
No, I don't think so. I think the, the ones that came here that night were all came here, traveled here for that, for the, for that purpose. The people that work here are not the people that make these decisions.
And we could make this letter, this waiver letter binding. Right?
We would just amend the permit to say that they have, the permit is amended to permit filing of the plat required beyond the 90-day period. And that, and we'll just and that way there's at least a basis for it. Otherwise, we're inconsistent with what I understand to be our historical practices, which is maybe it'll never come back to haunt us, but it's not a, it's not a good. But, but what, but they're just filling out another application, isn't that, we're still in compliance, there's no inconsistency.
We're still in compliance, there's no inconsistency, and it seems more straightforward than, than having a letter.
Except, isn't there a hearing required and a complete new submission?
Well, submission's not a, you say it like it's complex. It's probably easier than writing a letter. It's just a copy of what they've given us with a new date.
Dana?
I don't think we need to have a whole team of people fly from wherever they are to here. We can do a digital meeting. They can be present on FaceTime, um, uh, just like Andy would do. And whoever is local can bring in the new application or they can send it to us to be present for the hearing. They don't have to be physically in the room. We can put them on a, uh, digital device. They can have the paperwork in front of us and we can execute it.
Isn't the, is the, the permit is from, uh, this, this group? They're not, it's not from ISAVolta, right?
Right.
ISAVolta is the selling, the, the selling party.
They're, they're the ones that had to agree to this.
They're agreeing to the boundary line.
They're the ones who filed the permit that expired.
Yeah. And they're the ones that filed the Mylar.
Sorry.
And, you know...
Who filed the application? ISAVolta or the other company?
Uh, I think ISAVolta was the applicant because it...
It was their property.
It belonged to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, from whatever, if I remember correctly, that took a while before they initially didn't want to do it and that they didn't ultimately agree to it.
So I agree that perhaps that would be easy, but maybe not if they're in eight time zones away from here. So I, I, I see the complications.
I think the company's a Denmark.
Yeah. So...
Well, Mary Beth.
Cut to 2:00 AM.
I mean, I can see the point of, you know, moving forward. You want to be consistent. You don't want to give, you know, waive something for them and then have someone else file it, you know, 180 days, um, instead of 90. Hmm. But it does seem like making, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's so much easier when, of course, when people are local. Bill just gives them a call and says the 90 days is, you know, is right around the corner.
Approaching.
Yep. Fast approaching. Uh, or like in the case of the Robshan place, you, do you have your state permits yet because we made that contingent? And, I mean, it's just, it's just so much easier. It just, this was just, this really got lost in the corporate shuffle.
Do we have everything now that is, that is in compliance with our...
That's, that's it. That's, that's what we needed. If you can, if you look at the Mylar, I mean, it's just...
It's a sliver of land smaller than this room.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a...
Remember that room?
It is literally smaller than this.
Triangle, yeah.
Dana, Dana and Jerry, I, I don't frankly care which way we do it, whether it's through an amendment or through a permit, as long as we have a basis to file the Mylar, which according to my understanding, we do not have now. They're late and we have no procedure on the books, uh, to just accept it today.
So perhaps, perhaps...
Either, either way is fine. I mean, I, I don't care as long as we have something of record that says it's late and we grant it.
And why couldn't we use this waiver letter in the future for other instances?
I think we ought to come up with something that says we can or can't do it. We ought to come up with something that's on the permit or some procedure for the future we ought to come up with.
Yeah, like since, you know, it's not written into the regulations, it's a form that we came up with, maybe we can just change the form in the future. I know it doesn't, it's kind of messy with this particular instance or add language like, um, may be required to submit a new application, you know, so...
Or will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe...
So changing it from the 90 days.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's true. That's true.
What do you think? I, I'm thinking that we just make an exception for the complicated situation that we have here and not change anything. And so I'll make a motion to accept the, um, ISAVolta boundary line adjustment that corresponds to the Mylar that is present before Barbara and that we accept that as a, uh, valid, um, request to the planning commission to make the boundary line adjustment in spite of the fact that the, uh, application for the boundary line adjustment expired 90 days ago or approximately 90 days ago, given the international complications with this particular situation.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
We may be discussed out. I don't know.
My, my, my motion is not to, uh, to create any precedence with respect to the, um, application materials and our expectation for, uh, people to be able to meet the 90 day requirement. This is just an exceptional circumstance that happened as a result of, uh, international property owners, um, having difficulty securing the appropriate, um, signatures to move forward with the project.
The whole thing has been kind of confusing, like who owns what anyway as well.
Maybe we will recognize and offer an extension in the future if we know that we're dealing with international entities that may have difficulty.
If, if it's, if it's an extenuating circumstance, if someone is ill or something, I mean, we may do that.
We don't want to hold up a project that is beneficial to the town as a result of another entity not being able to comply with the, uh, 90 day requirement. I think that that's...
I think we're fine legally here, right?
I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
Because of those reasons? Because it's not legal for us to...
Well, do we have, do we have a court? Because I don't think we have anything before us from the applicant requesting it or in our regulations that permit us to do it this way.
Okay.
So I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I understand that I'm being picky. I'm trying to be careful. I'm not, you know, I'm not angry.
Good.
I just think it's a matter of appropriate procedure and I doubt that three weeks is going to make a big difference in slowing down this project under the circumstances. And with the new, and with a new application for the project anyway, pending before the, or to be...
Well, it's probably already written, but...
I'm sorry?
It's probably already written.
I'm sorry?
We may even be late for that. I mean, that is probably already been written, even though it's just dismissed, but...
Since they've already agreed to this...
No, no, he's, he's, he's talking about what they were turned down.
Oh, and that.
The third one, third site.
But with another, my point was with another project pending in some form or expected to divide this two into two and three, by, by asking to proceed the way I propose, um, isn't slowing anything down because they can't go anywhere anyway.
Well, I think they're trying to write up, they're probably trying to write up an application and they probably, probably want to say this has been cleared up. They do have the right of way.
Look, that little triangular piece is probably being, being used now. They, they agreed to it. They knew it was coming. I wouldn't be all surprised that they're, they're working and using that like their access.
I don't know. Okay. Are we ready for the question?
Is it seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
A motion by Dana and seconded by Mary Beth, um, that we accept the Mylar as presented and because of exceptional circumstances, um, including international complications, that we generally accept. We, we were receiving the Mylar.
As part of the, um, application for the boundary line adjustment, that we were approving the boundary line adjustment because we approved it previously, um, contingently and now this has come in, it just came in after the, um, timeline.
And there could be one more small discussion. Since I was one of the biggest opponents of it, I just want to say that I, I will be voting in favor of Dana's, um, because I am just, I, I just wanted to get it out there so I didn't look like a chameleon. The only reason I'm doing that is it's erring on the side of, um, common sense and, and I think that that's why I'm doing that. I just wanted to say since I was one of the people who were saying, I don't think so, I don't think so, so...
I was right there with you too.
What's that?
I was right there with you too, so...
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's just erring on the side of common sense. I, I see the logic once we had a discussion of why this should probably move forward. So, anyway.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Motion passes?
The motion does pass.
Go peel it.
It was, what's, five to one? Six to one?
One, two, six to one. You don't vote unless to make or break a tie? No? Is that the way it goes?
No, not necessarily.
Oh, okay. So six to one.
Okay, the minutes. Let's wrap up here with the January 30th minutes.
Um, I'm sorry, Barbara. I, I know this, this is going back a little ways, but you kind of caught me off guard and went really fast past the, um...
We did something fast.
Well, we did.
No discussion?
No discussion. I just, it was on the, um, uh, Rutland City Master Plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I wasn't, I wasn't clear what we were planning to do with that.
Not much, just other than to tell you it's out there. It affects, of course, surrounding towns if you want to read it. And their hearing is March 11th.
Okay. So it was more of an announcement. The reason that I...
I, I read through it. There's really nothing really new in it that would like grab our attention or, or, you know, get us to think that, wow, we should, we should look at that one a little bit closer.
That may very well be. And I, um, I, I, I looked at a few things. I just skimmed it because it's like, one, I couldn't read that much paper on a, read that much on a screen. I just, and I asked Bill if he'd just make a copy for me. He said if he needed to, if we were going to be doing something with it. Um, I printed out a couple of areas. One focused on, um, the age of the population, two focused on housing needs, and three, uh, job, uh, creation. So based on the three things that we were talking about with respect to the select board, housing, economic development, um, we, we, and the, um, inter-community collaboration, it, it might be worth, some of us anyway, uh, looking at what the implications might be for some of our components of the municipal plan in Rutland Town. And I'll volun, I can't believe I'm doing this. Uh, I'd volunteer to go through and do a, a bit of a, um, an analysis of where there might be common points where we might want to articulate that, but I'd just like Bill to print me a hundred page copy, I guess, of what I'm going to be reading over the next three months because I'm not going to get it done next weekend, I can tell you that. So if, um, if, if, if that would be beneficial to the group, I would be happy to, uh, pull together a, a summary of some things, areas where I think we might, um, have, uh, points in common.
Does this sit here?
Yeah, that's the whole thing. Yep. There you go.
Wow.
Yeah, mine.
It's not that big.
It's only 95 pages.
Yeah, 95.
Thanks.
Bill said 100, so...
Take me 95 days.
Yep, there you go. One a day. Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, that's...
If, if you want me to do that. If you don't want me to bother, then I certainly won't, but...
It's up to you.
I would say, you know, it's a pretty, like this is a final thing. They're probably not going to want to open up anything. Oh, okay.
I'm not looking at them opening anything up. I'm just looking to find out if there are areas of overlap with some of our, uh, priorities in the municipal plan.
Like extending the sewer system, I think.
For example, so that we could, we could collaborate. If we're talking about setting priorities, we might, I might be able to glean something from that that I would put together and say, here, look at these. I think it's this section, that section, and another section of our municipal plan. We might want to, uh, we might want to take that into consideration while we're looking at, uh, work with the, uh, Rutland, uh, Regional Planning Commission.
Good, thank you. Now, can we do the minutes?
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah.
Yep.
Norm?
What?
We're on to the minutes.
Okay. Where are the typos?
Any suggestions? Yeah, where are the typos?
I'm sorry?
Where are the typos?
There's one. Oops.
Oh goodness. Trying to behave myself.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I think Mr. Hall's name was left out.
No, I can't. I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Left out where?
Uh, in who was present.
It's there.
Yep. Jim Hall's there.
And he was...
These women, I'm looking at the wrong minutes. Excuse me.
Uh, January 30th.
I'll, I'll second Dana's motion.
Got two seconds and...
Oh, he, he can't, he wasn't present.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right.
I didn't, I didn't find any.
I didn't find anything either. What did you?
Awesome.
But if you'd like me to look again.
That's okay.
Uh, online, uh, under the announcements, there, there's a, um, uh, state approval, second line, state approval has not yet been received, yet so. Uh, there needs to be a period and then it's a second sentence. So, comma, approval for filing is being held until it comes through.
You can delete the word yet.
It makes it much clearer.
Has not, has not yet been received or not been received, or yeah, either way, but...
Touche.
Fix it however you like, Bill. So motion to approve the minutes as amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
You'll second that, Jerry. Okay. We ready for this question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.